I'd like to call the meeting, the special meeting of the Towns of Atherton City Council at 5:30 PM on Thursday, July 11. We begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please sign up.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. City Clerk, roll call please. City? Councilmember Dobie?
Here.
Councilmember Widmer?
Yo.
Vice Mayor Weiss?
Here.
Mayor Lewis? Present. So, this special meeting has been called this evening to attempt to fill the vacant council seat created by the resignation of Vice Mayor Jerry Carlson effective July 1st, 2013. Today's date was selected due to time-sensitive issues surrounding deadlines to file for a special election, if that is the course that is taken. Unfortunately, our city manager had scheduled a family trip previously that he could not cancel, and so he's not here. Our city clerk, Teresa De La Santa, who's very comfortable sitting in the city manager's seat since she had so much experience all last year, is here in his stead. And taking her position is our wonderful administrative assistant, Judy Heron. And so she'll be helping out with the city clerk's duty. So, thank you both for being here tonight. Also, our Assistant City Attorney, Jen Morrison, is here in place of City Attorney, Bill Connors. Jen, thank you so much for being here tonight. At this time, I'll open the floor for public comments. And this is the time for any member of the public who wishes to comment on what is on tonight's agenda. There are two items on the agenda tonight. And while you're not required to give your name or address, it's nice if you want to give your name so that we know who's making the comment. Any member of the public, yes, would like to speak on items on the agenda tonight.
Good evening, everybody. My name's Charles Ramarino. I live on Gresham Lane. I've been here for 50 years. The reason I'm here tonight is I'm supporting one of the candidates. In my time here in Atherton, I made sure I devoted enough time to my town that I live in and I admire. And during the course of my stay here, I served on many things. A couple of terms on the General Plan Committee. I've won the Holbrook Palmer Foundation. And one of my pet projects was the ACIL. And as you know, ACIL students were at the Civic Interest League. And it was my endeavor in my time there to get people engaged in just what the name implies, interest of civics in Atherton. And during that time, I had the good fortune for many years to be a friend of John Roggerio, who I'm supporting tonight. As you know, John was here all the time. And if nothing else, we should give him a Medal of Distinction of Honor, or Purple Heart, one of the two, for all the time he served here. And again, in our time at ACIL, we tried to give something to the public that we called Atherton, what was that, John? Pride. Pride in Atherton. I was so disappointed that I couldn't get anybody to sponsor that, including the then council members. And all I wanted was to have people interested in the politics, and that's where my support of John Roggerio comes in. Now, I'm asking you quite bluntly, you four council members, when you make your decision tonight, do not make it on the basis of us against them, but just pick the best candidate for the job. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other members of the public who would like to speak at this time? Thank you. Come to the podium, please.
Jane Shaughnessy, Stockbridge. I'm a neighbor of John Roggerio, and I want to echo everything that Charlie Ramarino said, because he's absolutely right on. I was in the Atherton Civic Interest League and did the newsletter for many years. But the most fun and the most wonderful deliberations and creative thinking I've spent with John Roggerio over the town issues. And I want to sponsor him because he is among the best of men and the best of the Atherton people. I really would like to see him judged accordingly. Thank you.
Any other members who would like to speak at this time? Thank you. Come on in.
Jim Assi, Seven Lloyd Drive, Atherton. 50-year resident of Atherton. I'd just like to say that I was extremely pleased to see that so many people stepped up for this job. Seven candidates, and I, we have new people. I read all the resumes. Pick one. Do it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members of the public would like to speak at this time? Seeing none, I'll close public comment. And again, thank you all for taking time from your busy schedules to come here tonight and participate in our government process. Like Jim said, it is heartwarming to see so many residents express interest in serving our community on what is absolutely and completely a volunteer and no-pay job. So, I know you have better things to do with your time. Seven residents have made applications, and they are, I'm going to read them. Greg Conlin, Rick DeGoya, Michael Lempres, John Roggerio, Diane Sandu, Joanne Sokoloff, and Michael Stodner. For the interview process, we will choose an applicant's name at random and invite that applicant to come to the podium and tell us about yourself and why you want to be a council member. Just limit your comments to five minutes. Then council members will have an opportunity to ask questions of each applicant. And I'd like to request that council limit their questions to just one at a time, and we can circle back if we have time. But we do need to be mindful of our time. After all applicants have been interviewed, I'll open the floor up to the public for any questions to candidates within that three-minute time limit, and then bring it back to council for discussion deliberation. So, at this time, are there any technical or clarifying questions that council members have or staff?
Are we going to ask the questions at the end of their interview or after all candidates have commented?
I think it should be after their interview, while there's still the interview. Yes. Does that seem right?
It's fine, either way.
Does that seem right? Yeah. Okay. So, the way the procedure is that we were going to draw a name at random to select who will be first. So, I have in this little basket names, and we could pass it down to Councilmember Dobie, the picker first one.
Hey, Jim? Okay. I might need to go pick out one.
Just one.
All right. Read it out. I will. Okay. Greg Conlin.
Well, he was first on the list, and he was first to submit his application.
Well, I appreciate having the opportunity.
I said five minutes. Yeah. Okay. Five minutes.
I appreciate the opportunity of being here tonight and explain why I want to run and why I think I'm qualified to serve as a council member on the board. My experience is in the private sector, I was a CPA also my career and a businessman. And then I went into state service as the president and commissioner at the California Public Utility Commission for six years and on the California Transportation Commission for three years. And the reason that PUC has jurisdiction over rail safety, which is very important to this town, and the Transportation Commission has jurisdiction over the roads and certain state highway thoroughfares, so both of those are relevant. In addition, I served on the committees here in Atherton. I've served on the rail committee for nine years, and we've been fighting the battle of the high-speed rail and Cal trains just to make sure that we keep our community safe and not have undue congestion. I'm not sure we've won the battle, but we keep fighting. And I think that that's one of the advantages of being on the council as compared to the committee member. I think you're in a better position to get things done and be recognized that you are a straight man as a committee member. So, some of the issues on the rail is the holdout station, we need to get that done. There was an incident up in South San Francisco where 11 people were put at risk of being killed. And I think it was a mistake, but things happen. But I think if we eliminate the holdout station, by eliminating the metal platform there, we'll be much safer in Atherton. And we've had, we had two fatalities in Atherton, which we never have had before in the last few years. We had one last Friday, which was certainly sad. And I'm not sure that we could have done anything to stop it. But on the other hand, I think Watkins is very unsafe because it's a blind intersection when you come up, and it needs to be improved. And I think a quad gate there would help. It wouldn't solve the problem, but it would certainly help. So, I would advocate trying to get that done. And I think Cal Trains is aware of this issue, and we've been talking to them for a couple of years, and hopefully we can get them over the goalpost to get that done. And the high-speed rail, I think the high-speed rail is very important because it could impact not only the rail safety and congestion, because there's going to be 20 trains an hour going through here at 100 miles an hour. And I just think people don't recognize the significance of that. And I think we need to deal with it. I think in the town center, where you locate it, how close you locate it to the tracks will be a factor based on what we decide the high-speed rail is going to do. So, that's another issue I think I can help deal with. So, I think the next issue I think we're facing is a strong financial budget. I'm chairman of the Finance Committee. I've been on there for three years, and I was on the Audit Committee for two years, and then we combined them a year ago. So, I have the financial expertise to deal with balancing the budget and particularly in the liabilities, the unfunded liabilities for pensions and health care. So, those will be major challenges in the budget going forward for the next few years, and something that I think I can add to to help solve that issue. In addition, I think we need to, in balancing the budget, get the parcel tax passed, and I think that's going to be a major effort next year, because 60% of that goes to support the police. And if it does not pass, I think that would really be a challenge to the town to figure out how to make up for that hole in the revenue. So, that would be something I've worked very hard for and try and accomplish next year. And the capital projects, the capital projects, is that five minutes?
One minute.
One minute left. All right. Well, I think the capital projects would certainly have to finance, and we need to make sure that the town center is financed. I know we've got a committee that's doing the design and the construction, but I think raising money is something I've done several times in my political career, so I know how it's done, and hopefully I could help in that process to get it done here at the city. I would work hard to maintain civility at the council meetings, and I think based on my experience at the PUC, we can do a much better job. And I just think I'm a logical candidate because I made the personal commitment and the financial commitment to run for the council seat last November, and I took third place with over 1,300 votes, and I lost by only 200 votes. So, I would logically, was the next candidate on the election, and I have 1,300 residents who voted for me. So, I think that would, at least logically, seem that I would be the first one to do. So, I think I have the qualifications and experience, and I would appreciate it if you wanted me. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. Any council members' questions at this point for Greg? Greg, I have just one question. You touched on a lot of priorities for facing Atherton. What would you think, what would you say is the most pressing issue that this council is going to have to deal with within the next five months?
Five months?
Five months. Short-term, the most pressing issue?
Well, I think the parcel tax, but I'm not sure what the timeframe is of getting that on the ballot. But if it comes up in the next five months, that would be the most important thing. And I think with the fatality we had last week, I would try and do something on an urgent basis to mitigate safety. I just think that we've been very fortunate not having anything fatality for almost a half a century. So, the fact that we've had two in the last two years and one in the last week, just I, Cal trains, I think, can help us, and I just think we need to put some pressure on them to get it done. And as a council member, I think I could do a better job.
Thank you. Thank you very much. So, moving down the road, would you like to make the next selections? I have to hold it up because they're full today.
Okay. Rick DeGoya, come on down.
Okay.
Are you sure they're not now for that award?
Well, you know, and in ranking of applicants.
I can feel like it's like a Braille thing.
I don't think so. It came out of my little, you know, in print.
Okay. Well, I want to thank you for the opportunity to appear before you in this public forum and to share with you why I'm interested in joining the Atherton Town Council. I've been working on the Civic Center Advisory Committee and its ad hoc library committee since they were formed earlier in the year. I've found that work to be really exciting and fulfilling, and I've loved working with other residents that are on the same team. So, that's been very encouraging for me, and I think these committees are advancing the opportunity for us to build a new town center here in Atherton, which I think is really important work. And in the course of that, I've gained a much better understanding of how the hard work that the council does, how it can contribute to making Atherton a better place. So, here I am. I believe that I am particularly well-suited to be an addition to the council because of my background, my experience, and the collaborative manner in which I work to get things done. I have an undergraduate degree in Contemporary American Studies from Cal and a law degree from Harvard. I've worked in Silicon Valley for the last 28 years, 12 years at Wilson Sons Senior Law Room in Palo Alto, 12 years as an executive CEO of various software companies, and four years in venture capital. And I feel very committed to Atherton. I've been here for 12 years, and my family's been here for longer, and I find it a wonderful place. During the time that I've worked in the valley, I've served on more than 10 boards of directors of technology companies or nonprofit organizations. And in the course of that, I've learned how to approach difficult strategic issues and how to negotiate reasonable solutions that take into account the different stakeholders who are involved. I work hard to approach these issues thoughtfully and weigh the strategic implications of the various options and seek appropriate input from staff and other key stakeholders. I believe that it's important to be transparent, because through print transparency, you have the greatest opportunity to achieve consensus. Whether I'm appointed to Mr. Carlson's seat or I need to run for the seat in November, I intend to reach out to the residents of Atherton by organizing meetings in all of the sectors of the town and meeting people. And I do that if I'm appointed. I think it's really important for a council member to be in touch with the various sectors of the town in order to listen to people, to hear what are their key concerns, and what are the issues that they think are the most important issues. And in the course of those meetings, I would speak about what I see are the key issues, but I think listening to people is critical. At this point, sort of the top of my key issues list are the following four items. Number one, to design and build a new civic center on town property in an understated but attractive campus that includes this building, a new library, a new police facility, new administrative works offices. I think that's really important, and it's an opportunity to bring the town together in a way that I find very exciting. Number two, maintain our police force and its close relationship with our residents to continue to protect our property and people. Number three, support the parcel tax in November and manage the town's fiscal resources in a careful, respectful, and fiscally conservative manner that works to ensure that the town gets good value for the expenditure of our taxes, including the management and reduction of our significant unfunded liabilities. And number four, work hard to find consensus among the members of the council and in all cases tolerate and respect differences of opinion. I strongly agree that once that the council makes a decision, that it's incumbent on the members of the council to fully support that decision. And a couple other issues that I had mentioned, I see my time's almost up, are, you know, I think that there is a huge wealth of knowledge, expertise, and experience amongst the residents in Atherton, and that it's very important for us to find ways to bring those people. I've been involved in Atherton activities and community activities in Atherton for the last six months, and it's been great. And I think we need to find a way to bring more people in and to utilize them in our town committees and in appropriate state and regional committees where Atherton needs to be represented.
Thank you. Thank you, Rick. Any council members? Mr. Dobie?
Hi, Rick. First of all, thank you for all the work you've done on the various committees, including the Library Committee. One of the things I'd like to ask is your experience has always been in the private sector, just like mine. And regularly, I get criticisms from various people. I get criticisms from a lot of people, actually, but you really don't understand that the public sector is sort of different from the private sector. What are your feelings about that?
Well, I guess I'd first say I respect that. And I think there is a difference in the public sector. You're representing people, and you have an obligation to those people. I mean, I've been on various boards where I represent the stakeholders in those companies, but they are private companies. Some of them are nonprofits, so it's a little bit different. But where I see the similarity the greatest is when you're on a board, you've got a staff that you're, you know, that work with you and support the board. The board is weighing strategic implications and figuring out how to best represent the stakeholders that the board is obligated to represent. I think that's the same in Atherton. We've got a staff. We need to let the staff do its job. We hire the best city manager that we can find, and then we support him or her to do the work, and we assess the strategic implications. So, I think there are similarities. I guess I also respect that there's differences, and it's not something I've been very directly involved in. So, that's something that I would have to learn. But I think all of us, as we enter new activities in our lives, you know, the right approach is to be open to it and learn what we can learn so that we can do the best job we can do. Thank you.
Any other council members who would like to ask Rick's question? My question you answered with your key priorities, so thank you very much.
Sure.
Okay. So, we'll go down to our next council member.
You have to go higher.
I just want you to look in.
Not this one. It's a fortune cookie.
You're supposed to be Michael.
John.
John Roggerio.
You broke the cycle.
Well, you know, we know that it's not rigged then, right?
That one didn't have any sticky on it.
Okay.
Good evening. I was going through the list of 10 possible questions you would ask us, it was given to me by Teresa, and I find, according to my order, I think it's my importance, if I can go through most of them. Number 10 is, I think, one of the most important. As a member of the council, what would you bring to the table? And 70% of our budget is police, and the police are a big item in our discussion. I, I'm a background, isn't everybody, but most people know I was 30 years of police officer in San Francisco, lieutenant in charge of up to 200 officers. In fact, the most common felony in Atherton is burglary residential. For 12, for 11 years, I was in charge of burglary detail, 15 detectives. And also, interesting part of police work, I was in internal affairs for some time investigating possible missed officer violations. We also, previously, we had a good officer involved here in Atherton, Dick Moore, who was our chief of police. Later on, become, became our town manager, which shows his big background, helped the town quite a bit. I've been involved in the police budgets since I, in San Francisco as well. I would be here regarding my position as a supervisor officer. I've also, after I retired, I don't know if you know, for 12 years, I was the director of security for the largest real estate company in California, Walter Schornstein. I did Walter Schornstein Company. I did the personal security and 250 guards in 16 high-rise buildings in San Francisco. And I worked for 12 years, as I say there. In fact, the 50th anniversary of the United Nations was held in Portlo Valley at 1260 Westridge, Schornstein's home. And at the time, Sheriff Horstley and I coordinated the whole security for that. People came from all over the world for the 50th anniversary of that. So, I think that brings, in this question, it does bring some needed type of background to the council. Because I can remember the days when the council had four attorneys up there, three in the council, one sitting on the side. So, they were pretty well locked into what their occupation was. The second thing I think is more important on this list, how would you get more residents engaged in town government? I've been going to these meetings for many years. In fact, it's hard to believe, I've been to at least 150 meetings, which comes up to over 650 hours. And it happens to me, this is a big crowd. I've been to the meetings, and I'm the only person here, maybe two or three, which is terrible for the residents, 7,000 residents, 5,000 voters. But there's a new way, and we've been talking about it for years, the TV broadcast of the public channel 26 and 29, the broadcast these. I watched last night the Palo Alto Transportation Committee for a while. In fact, I phoned one of you people and left a message, maybe you could watch it. But I don't know if you people watch it. And not only do they have live at council meetings, Palo Alto, Menlo Park, they have it rebroadcast later. And this is for people like Charlie Ramarino, who works. He comes home from work late. Really, he comes to a meeting. I don't blame him. He has to get up in the morning and go to work, and he's difficult. And young ladies, women with children and families, they can't come to the meeting. We should really push this TV. We're dinosaurs in this area, because every other town in the area has it. And you might have 500 or 5,000 people watching you, don't even know it. And the third idea, one of the thoughts here, the thoughts on towns involved at the state or regional level. Well, we've been very good at that, not just traffic and those mundane type of items. We had the red-legged frog in the San Francisco Creek. It's a joke, but it's a very serious matter with the state and the government. We would have been fined plenty if we didn't deal with that. And Atherton, the creek comes down the hill from Woodside Portola, and Atherton did a big issue in solving that problem. And plus the traffic, the cut through traffic that's going to occur with these new businesses coming in our area, and so on and so forth. So, my fourth item, what do you feel Atherton does well? Where can we improve? Well, we can improve with the Cal train, but everybody's trying to do well to, I'm sorry, not Cal train, but the crane issue, to deal with that, which will hurt the average person losing that area, real estate value-wise and so on. In Cal trains, we've had, in our area, flooding. Every, come out of February, you look at the flooding and so on, but I've been flooded. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, John. Any council members who would like to ask John a question?
I will. Hey, John, I have one question.
Oh, no worries.
With your extensive amount of history here in Atherton and knowing that we have seven applicants, what is your opinion related to the appointment versus an election?
Well, I would say, since I'm standing here for an appointment, and I know what it costs, I know what it costs for the elections, and I've got several people, some of you on the council. And it's financially troublesome, it's hard on your feet door-to-door, and you should go to all these neighborhood organizations, like Phil Lytle's organization, the Lindenwood Homeowners, the Loiden Park, Victoria Lane, the Lindenwood, Loiden Park, because all of them. And you start hitting all those, you buy new shoes. Thanks, John.
I just have another, I have a quick question. One more question for you, John. Because in your application, you said that financial viability of the town is your prime priority. Um... What other revenue sources do you think the town should pursue if it's not the parcel tax?
Oh, no, I think, as you people discussed for the last council meeting, parcel tax is on the agenda. You talked, not me, but you people talked of several varieties of parcel taxes, which would probably increase your, your money coming in. Also, you talked like utility tax and other types of taxes or other types of forms of income.
Thank you. Okay, so we're going to, so do I get to choose?
I'll.
Your meeting.
No, it's your meeting too. It's our meeting.
You're the president. You're the president.
That's a good one.
Okay, is this a good one?
That's a good one.
Joanne Bern Stupel.
I'll tell you how I'm feeling. Rationally confident, emotionally terrified. And I've been thinking this and feeling this for days now, which is part of the reason I was one of the very last to submit, I think at about maybe 4:50 on a Friday afternoon. But what it forced me to do was to think about, why am I experiencing this emotional turmoil? And why is it making me ask myself, why am I doing this? Why am I doing this? You know what? I think that any public servant, any leader of business, industry, nonprofit organization should be asking themselves that question daily. Why am I doing this? Why do I feel terrified? Well, it's because there's a lot of responsibility on our shoulders as leaders. And I firmly believe that leaders are the people who are unrecognized and unappreciated and complained about behind their backs and to their faces. And we choose it. We choose it because we are compelled to do it. And each of us has our own style, our own belief system, our, our own filters that help us see the world and the people in it the way we do. But what brings each of you here to this desk and me to this podium, as it does all of the other candidates, I know in my heart is that we want to serve. And no man, no woman is an island unto him or herself. We want to do this together. I think of family dynamics, which oftentimes is what it must feel like when there is disagreement or there is discontent. The reason we do it is because our heart is invested. Some people have asked me, with only a few years in Atherton, my family and I have been here for five years, how is it that you feel you are sufficiently informed and qualified to serve your fellow community members? Well, I have been serving my community my entire life, every place I have lived. So it is part of who I am. I can't help myself. That's why when I feel that emotional turmoil, I just keep on doing it. Well, in thinking about how I actually have served Atherton for longer than the five years that my family and I have lived here, I think to my work in Redwood City with the Redwood City Education Foundation. And most people here are very familiar with Selby Lane School. And you know that Selby Lane is part of the Redwood City School District. However, it is in Atherton. A third of our households are in the Redwood City School District. And I would say not one of our residents sends a child to Selby Lane. I work very hard to raise money to help the kids and the teachers in the school because they deserve it, but also because it has an impact on Atherton, it has an impact on Redwood City, it will have an impact on our county. And I believe it will have an impact on our world. And I think that our council, it's incumbent upon our council to continually look at ways that we can reach out, not only within our own community, but across communities, to make it better for us all. And I see Atherton being on the precipice of the most incredible opportunities to be thought leaders, to be looked at and pointed at as leaders that others in the state want to follow, particularly with regard to high-speed rail and all the issues around that on the forefront. I know you'll want to ask me, and so that I can preempt your question, let me tell you what I think my, the priorities are here. We absolutely need to look at this parcel tax, not just passing it, but maybe getting more money. We need to look at what's coming up with our police contract. The civic center is, in my view, going to be the heart of our town. And I think that's the best way to engage our entire community to make that happen for the benefit of us all and our neighbors.
Thank you, Joanne, thank you. Any council member who might ask a question?
Sure.
First off, thanks a lot for running and now to all the candidates. Last year during the election time, you submitted and then decided that it wasn't to be for you because of other constraints, et cetera. So I guess my question is, you know, why now? What's changed? And if there's not a selection, maybe you're, I don't, you know, you don't have to answer it, but are you willing to run again or?
Thank you very much for that question because that tells me you remember me. Or maybe you Googled me, I don't know, but...
Because you also put in your application later.
That's right, that's right. You know, I had a wonderful business mentor who told me that you should always use every minute and second of time you have to make a decision, including waiting till the very last minute. As long as you get in before the last minute, you're on time. So I try to follow that philosophy. At the time, I was considering running for council here or running for the San Mateo County Board of Education. And I will tell you very honestly, my...